Sweetie, the town supervisor is in foul.
Yep, Elizabeth is on there.
You hear me, folks?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, let's.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the town of Duanesburg Planning Board for its twelfth and last meeting of the year, December 16th, 2021. As you know, we meet every Thursday of the month, so this is the last meeting of the calendar year for us. Couple things, everybody has a copy of the agenda. You know, we're a really small rural town, but there's been a very tragic incident in this town in the last, you know, 10 days or so, and I don't know if this is... What I just ask everyone is, let's take just a 10-second break of silence to honor those that were... There's lives were taken recently in this small hamlet of ours. Okay, thanks, everyone. Again, my name is Jeff Schmarr. Go around, do the introductions. I think maybe most of you, I see repeat customers here all the time. Some people on Zoom may not recognize us, so we'll go around. First of all, one of our board members is on Zoom, so she can go first.
Good evening, Elizabeth Novak, Town of Duanesburg Planning Board member. Happy to be here, and I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Teresa Baker, Board Counsel.
Now, often playing with her, remember, my wall for 24 hours. Gosh, how many planning board members?
Otherwise, with Paris, Chair. Pro-Forceman Planner.
The clerk.
Was this much more than the clerk? Well, see, the... So we're, of course, behind this whole meeting, so she underplays her role here, for sure. Okay, the first part of our meeting is the open forum. And the general rules of the open forum, anyone is allowed to bring up a topic of any kind of interest, whether it's of interest to the board or you personally. We ask that you identify yourself by name and location within the town, if you're within the town. We ask you to limit your presentation to a maximum of four minutes if possible. And those are basically the ground rules. So if they'll make a motion to open the open forum for the December 16th, 2021, Town of Duanesburg Planning Board.
I'll second.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so if someone has something to bring up, let's open the open forum.
This running 13388, thanks for going. At the November planning meeting, this director presented a slideshow of color images concerning positive contaminants with the retention funds of the car wash. The draft meeting minutes included black and white images that were essentially illegible and did not convey any of his information. I submitted a letter requesting the draft minutes include color images. And within 24 hours, the minutes were reposted with color images. This is one of the reasons that having date and timestamps on the minutes is important, so that we can track how things change as we move forward. And it's important that the minutes accurately convey what the residents, developers, and members say and present at meetings. It's more transparent and accountable the town is when reviewing planning projects, better those projects will be for the entire town. My service website indicates that there's an application for a 94C state mandated 20 megawatts solar project on Humphreys Road. Has the developer approached the planning board, and when might the residents expect the developers to provide a public information question? And I don't know how far it's gone, so...
No one has approached the planning board, and no one would approach the planning board because the 94C process is pretty much entirely run by the state. They have a website. The best place to find information about the 94C applications is on the state website. There are also professionals that work for the Office of Renewable Energy Siding. And there would be both a project manager plus an attorney that would cover this. So if anybody has any questions about any project that pops up on the 94C list or the Article 10, which there shouldn't be any anymore on the Article 10 to public service permission, I would just urge you to go to the state offices because that is where you're going to find the information. They're not particularly forthcoming with information to...
Thank you, Ellen. Anyone else have something to say?
Yeah. Patrick Grant, 9866, Western Turnpike. I was here last month, and I gave the board just a quick update on the permit regarding the car wash, the overflow parking permit that was issued back in June. There were several conditions on the resolution, and I just thought I'd give you a quick update about the fact that nothing has changed since last month's meeting. None of these improvements or these conditions are still not being met. The planning and the screening plan that was supposed to be undertaken at the time of the construction never happened. There's still no change to that. There's some small trees that we put between my property and the parking lot, which don't really block anything. The engineer was supposed to provide a certification to the town that the overflow parking lot and the screening is constructed in accordance with the approved site plans. That the stormwater drainage is functioning as designed. I think we all know that that's not happening. The existing car wash will place a gate at the entrance to the overflow parking lot to ensure that all trucks or other vehicles are not kept at the facility overnight. There's no gate up, there's nothing up, and I will tell you, since the last meeting, there's been two nights where there's been trucks parked there overnight. The existing car wash will place visible, long-lasting signs at the car wash and overflow parking lot to indicate that the trucks may not idle and the trucks may not park at the facility overnight. As of today, there are still no signs. Existing car wash will ensure that any music is turned off between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. And that dust is controlled on the access roads. The dust does not leave the property boundaries, including neighboring properties. Still listening to pop radio and music all night long. It's not been shut off, it's still operating. As far as the dust is, that's never been doubled for all the years that it's been here. And again, I just want to refer back to the zoning ordinance 13.2.4. Sufficient screening shall be provided to obscure the parking space from the residential property. I can still sit at my dining room table and look right into that parking lot, and I can see every square inch of it, so nothing's being obscured. And as I said at the last meeting, the situation with the way that's set up, and there's no screening, there's no fencing, there's no break, has created, I believe, a security risk for myself and my wife. The fact that someone can just pull back there in the middle of the night and just walk literally 100 feet, walk right into my deck and my back porch. And not to, you know, change the subject, but as a town justice, you know, there's a lot of people that leave this courtroom that aren't happy with the decisions that I have to make for them. And it wouldn't take much for somebody to want to get even with me or pull in the back and try to do something like that. So I think there's a real security risk that has to be dealt with here. And so I just would like to know if anything's been done. I know at the last meeting, Teresa, you stated that the enforcement has to come from the enforcement officer and not the board, but I just, I don't know what we're going to do here. I just don't see that there's much to be done.
I think, Dale, you had a meeting at the site with Sparrow and Brett Steenberge. And we have a letter from Brett Steenberge. So I only have one copy, Your Honor, but I'm happy to give it to you. So this will tell you that they... The town is trying to hold their feet to the fire, and I don't know if you got a copy of it. No, no, take it. I've got it electronically. It's no problem. So basically, Dale, you want to address where that is?
All these. Planning board, the men drainage issues. And as far as the gate, he has them on order. They've been backordered. And he wanted to get 20 foot, but he may settle for 16 foot and then have a chain in between. Because those are ones he can hit at this time. And then he's going to sign the job. And as far as the music, I talked to them about the music, and they're supposed to be turning that down.
Yeah, I... I talked to the attorney for the applicant, Dan Z. I shared with them all the issues, particularly the fact that there was no sign, there was no gate, and the music is still blaring and the dust isn't working, and you have water running in your backyard. So they're aware of the issues, and their only option at this point is to come back before this board to get it reviewed again. Excuse me.
One thing I didn't hear in any of that list is one that concerns me the most, which is the screening and the fencing between the two properties. I didn't hear anything about that thing.
Well, they were out discussing the screening as well. I wasn't there, Dale. Did they have...
I wasn't present during that. But there's the next morning.
The next morning, okay. So we don't have a certification from the engineer that the screening was done appropriately. They're going to have to come back because they're being told by DEC that there's some concern about draining the water into the ditch by the DOT roadway, and and their solution appears to be unacceptable to that particular problem, which would be having it run down the existing drainage area. Right, Dale? So I think, given the situation, we're going to ask them to come to the next planning board meeting and present how they're going to fix it. And then it's going to be up to the board whether the board revokes the permit or not. That's where we are.
Well, that was finance.
Question for Dale. He now has a black dog? Okay, when did you last see a truck up there?
Well, it was a couple of weeks ago.
It was, okay.
If he's recently... I see there's some cones there tonight, so I guess that he's considering blocking it off. Not going to stop when the vehicle go in.
Well, I mean, what would you have him use to block it off?
Well, like the gate that he was supposed to put up six months ago. It upsets my frustration here, right?
I understand that you're frustrated. I understand.
Every day that goes by, my property value continues to decrease because of this. And I'm very concerned about the safety issue back there. There has to be some fencing or something to separate that property.
Well, we will strongly let you know when the application is back on, and it should be back on in January.
Thank you.
Someone else want to...
Just to get back to that, I did myself speak to Sparrow on Tuesday. He had mentioned putting a perimeter to stop the water from our property. I don't know, that hasn't been done yet. He said he was going to do that this week. Every day that goes by, springtime's coming. I'm getting extremely concerned about the water behind. There's a lot of runoff now, which never was there. So that is my big concern, so with that water issue.
Yeah, I was surprised that he went out and told them to completely change everything. And so it's not the plan we approved. Right. And it wasn't the plan we approved after they built it, and now they're saying they can't do the plan they approved.
Right.
And that, your statement, Dale. So they got to come back in. That's... If it was, Your Honor, if it was just an issue of building it the way they said they were going to, that's Dale. If they need a change, they got to come back to us.
Right.
Teresa, let me... At our list, planning board meeting, you suggested that they put up a solid wood fence.
Yeah.
The zoning requirement of obscuring the view.
Right.
Would it be appropriate for the board to have a board initiated modification to the permit? Telling you that he has to do that?
It would be a condition you would impose. That was very DEC-like, Jeff. We're not all-powerful.
Well, my frustration is that there's seven of us sitting here, and the citizens are here.
I know.
We really went through this in detail. We went with Brent Steenberge. We talked about run-on and runoff controls. My feeling is he never visited the site. He never did an elevation profile of that area. He's a licensed PD, so he accepted his recommendation of the design, which was clearly flawed. It couldn't be built that way. And the letter that he just sent in on December 15th is nothing more than an excuse, as far as I'm concerned. It's saying, oh, we can't do it that way because we couldn't see. Well, an engineer with a license for the state of New York does not present to a board a project that's not construct... Not constructable in accordance with the board's recommendation. And I think the board, I think most of the members feel strongly that we can't sit here and approve a set of plans and have somebody go build it completely different and say, oh, that's okay, go ahead. Because that undermines the credibility of each and every one of us. And some of us, I mean, I've signed plans, and my signature is on those plans. When I was always... Little PD, but my license is not active. But when I sign something, I expect it to be built exactly to the T, as it's built. If it's not going to be built that way, you come and ask, here, I can't do it. I have to have these changes. And just go home and build it. So I'm pretty upset about this situation. And, you know, I think my feelings, most of the board members feel the same way. If you don't, you can speak up for sure. And I just think that we need to hold these guys to the approval that we sent them in writing. And I think we need to actually put this fencing issue in writing. So what I suggest is that we bring either issue a stop work order or something to bring Sparrow back in here to make sure that that fence gets filled to meet the zoning requirement, because those trees will not fulfill the 13.2.4 requirement of obscuring that...
Well, let's talk about the universe of things, powers that we have.
Yes.
As planning board, we don't have the power to issue a stop work order. That's Dale. Dale issues stop work orders. What the planning board can do is put them on notice that we're considering revoking their special use permit. Okay, and so I can send Mr. Z a letter, assuming you all authorize me. I can send Mr. Z a letter telling him the client's going to lose a special use permit, and you must come with your PE to the meeting in January.
Okay.
Okay?
So what happens in the meantime if our house doesn't get flooded before all of this gets resolved? And then all of that.
It's going to be the snow back there.
Right, exactly. So I'm getting, you know, extremely nervous, like, what happens? In the meantime?
Yeah, yeah, that's the question.
Right.
I was just wondering, seeing as they don't have a use certificate or completion, I don't know exactly what that term is, a certificate of use. Obviously, I would think it shouldn't be used right now. Dale says they took measures to not be using it. I think that's step one, that we've got to ensure that it's not being used, and if it is, you know, it's another reason that the board can use to revoke the special use permit. So that would be step number one. Step number two is if the plan can't be... Basically, Mr. Steenberge has stated that his design that he presented to the board, that the board approved, can't be built due to the nature of the topography out there. Basically, that plan and that approval is void, you know, and therefore we need to review a completely new set of plans for approval. And that's not my opinion. That's their own PE's statement that the plan as approved can't be built. So I don't think there, in the short term, the long term, anything, there should be no further use of that site until something is done. And whether bringing the site back to the conditions that it was prior or presenting a plan that is approved and functional.
Does anybody else have any comments tonight for the public forum?
Okay, hearing no other comments, then in the public forum, I'll make a motion to close the public forum for tonight's December 16th. Thank you. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, the next topic on tonight's agenda, we've switched it around a tiny bit, but the public hearings is typically the number one thing tonight. We're having a public hearing for Joe and Debbie Sisson located at 2.00, there's 1-41, Brimness Corners Road, three lot major subdivision. You got the floor.
Oh, no, I just, I guess I could make a motion to make a public hearing.
I'm making a motion to open.
I second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Please put the plan up on the screen.
Just a few directions on the driveway where he can have a place to turn around, partway back, and turn around at the end and long driving down the middle. And all the other paperwork is in, as far as I know. On the next step, pass the public hearing. Well, it's 15.6 acres, just dividing it into three lots for three separate homes for two of my boys and my wife. And I consider remaining on besides three homes. Each lot is reasonably the same size.
The turnaround needs on the pyrex.
No shared driveway.
Sure, okay.
We've been through that whenever.
Yes. Good idea. And yours. Okay, does anyone have any comments about this subdivision? Hearing no comments or issues, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
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 Yes.
Yes.
Elizabeth, do you have the, uh, you, you have any information, secret findings?
I do. Can everyone hear me clearly?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I can re, uh, make a motion to reaffirm the seeker, preliminary seeker negative declaration that we made at the November planning board meeting. So I will read that now. The Sisson Major Subdivision Project has been reviewed and evaluated for environmental impacts in accordance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act, including completion of parts one, two, and three of the full environmental assessment form. On part two, identification of potential project impacts, none of the potential project impacts have been identified as moderate to large for the proposed major subdivision located on tax map number five two point zero zero dash one dash four one, which is a fifteen acre parcel to be divided into three lots. Lot two A consists of approximately five point two five acres. Lot two B consists of approximately five point five nine acres. And lot two C consists of approximately four point five acres. The proposed major subdivision is consistent with the town comprehensive plan and the town zoning ordinance. Parcel is not located in an environmentally sensitive area or hazardous waste remediation site and is not within the hundred year floodplain. It is anticipated three single family dwellings will be constructed over a period of time. The project will require private wells to be drilled and private septic systems installed, which will require permits from the Schenectady County Health Department. The total area of disturbance is anticipated to be less than one acre. Any construction will require appropriate stormwater controls prior to any construction activities. The action will not result in any impacts to agricultural resources as the property is not actively farmed. Any construction would take place outside of any wet areas as there may be federally regulated wetlands on the property. So this will avoid any potential impacts. The proposed impact, proposed action will not have an impact or any adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect infrastructure for transit, biking, or walkways. The proposed action should not create a hazard to environmental resources or human health or rare threatened or endangered species. There are no known archaeological sites on the property. The property is consistent with existing, the existing community character with no aesthetic impacts anticipated. The proposed action will have little to no impact or increase in the use of energy. The parcel is located adjacent to a site listed on the National and State Register of Historic Places, once part of the Little Thomas Farm complex. The state historic preservation office has been consulted and has no concerns with the subdivision. Therefore, based on this information, the planning board is determined that the proposed major subdivision will not have any significant adverse environmental impacts on and a negative declaration is made for the purposes of Article eight of the Environmental Conservation Law. So I will make that motion. Yes.
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 That's definitely a motion to approve the subdivision. If you guys are ready to do that.
We are.
I'm making a motion to approve the, uh, three lot major subdivision. Uh, we're expecting to shoot point five and the first, um, main first subdivision ordinance for, uh, Mr. Joe and Mr.
Yes, and would be DOT highway.
Okay, and have a condition of the graduate highway, um, DOT highway.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I think we're good to go. Thanks for your cooperation. Thank you, Elizabeth, for that well-written finding and, uh,
Thank you.
Good to go. You can deal with Dale from now on. Okay. Next on our new business, we have Joseph Surft. Special use permit for an event venue. Joe, you're on. Hey, feel better?
Yeah. And I appreciate you letting me cut in front of everybody starting all the time. So, we, uh, set up last month with, with the special use permit. Basically, we've got a pre-existing hundred fifty year old barns been used for a while for events. The town passed the law for a special use permit, not used commercially. We wanna open it up to commercial events. There's no site change, no nothing, we're not building anything, changing anything, adding anything. Just switching it over so it can be used commercially. So people wanna book it for weddings, anniversary parties, graduation parties and stuff like that. Utilize the facility. The environment in a long form. God, you have a lot of time. Yep. Dale's got a copy of it.
Yeah, that, thank you.
I dropped it off. I'm gonna do it. Yeah.
Yeah, Melissa's had a party before, so.
Number one, partying before, yeah.
I think there was, but you were gonna give us, um, you're planning on using your neighbor's property for the secondary emergency access and you're gonna give us from consent to do that?
Yeah. I didn't realize. I've got it. I'll drop it off to Dale, just waiting.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we had also asked for some traffic, traffic study, the, the second access information for emergency vehicles, accessibility for parking for, um, like ADA purposes. Those are just where I head down.
You were gonna also touch bases, I recall with the, with the prior, prior guys, I was even Mariah though, amongst.
Neighbor had been inspected, inspected building, inspected, find your way, they inspect the other. They've done a study plan. What they're gonna do with a hundred fifty year old barn, which is based on the test on fire, they're gonna surround it around. I can try to put it out. Do I need a letter from the chief that he's done that?
Okay.
I understand.
I mean, they're, they, you dress and all that, okay, with the fire department, the road's big enough and.
I, I think that's what we were waiting on. That's part of their sign off.
Okay, next. Next week, I'll get the letter from the neighbor. We'll contact the company, use the traffic study, and just looking for flow. Site's done, you know, it's good. And I'll get a letter from the chief. Thanks to the second site, he's got no problems with getting in there and using the neighbor's driveway for emergency access.
Again, Joe, how many vehicles do you, do you kind of expect it here?
Okay, so especially use permit authorized, you have two hundred.
Yeah.
You guys can limit it to whatever you want.
Yeah.
I'd like to at least be able to do one fifty, but my goal is to start at a hundred. They're saying, uh, events you should plan for people for vehicle. Instead of a hundred, that puts us around thirty-three to, you know, forty-five vehicles. If we want one fifty. You wanna just say two hundred and let me go, I'm good with that too. Whatever.
Well, it's no problem. If you wanna start smaller, find out how it works out and come back, we can always approve.
Okay.
More, you know, it doesn't, there's no problem doing it that way, Joe. It's up to you.
The traffic study, you know, if you did whatever assessment you do, it says two hundred is no issue at all.
Okay. I'll do a traffic study for two hundred.
You know, unless there's some sort of limitation, because, you know, you know. Okay, we don't like you. We don't, you know, you should get everything you got on the first instance.
As far as the, that's still, we're talking graspers. They meant, I booked orders, seven asphalt parking spots on two gravel right now.
Yeah, that, like, I was just gonna bring that up. You, you had mentioned last time that you had some parts gate, uh, parking spots. Um, I, I would suggest if you can do like a plan showing where those are, delineate those somehow, showing us where those are in association with the access drives in the building and everything else. You're gonna need like a, like, for all that, I mean, a block plan, you know, would be.
You're gonna do the special use permit. I did a trace of, and provided that to you guys. It's got the block plan, building plan where the parking and art skate parking, everything is where the buildings are.
So you've got. I mean, if that's still current, you know, what, the traffic study and the fire department and everybody is working on.
Okay, so you've got engineers gets that I just traced over, changed it from whatever happened last time to events, I need this time.
Yeah, I mean, I think we did at least need to see how that figures, especially if you're involving the neighboring property.
Okay, you, I provided that to you guys.
Um, did we get that?
I dropped it off at the last meeting. Full-size plan.
I have a full-size plan. But it's, I mean, upstairs.
Yeah.
Okay, she has it upstairs.
So when you, when you give Melissa coffee, it's different, like, maybe you have place seventeen or eleven by seventeen. So that way she can distribute it to the board and they can see it, so.
Okay.
The other thing I can suggest is that when you hire your traffic guy to do the traffic study, have them do a plan of how the traffic's gonna work, where the parts are gonna be parked. That's, that's really important because that'll tell you if you're gonna experience back up on the roads or anything like that. We're just trying to endure due diligence to make sure that, you know, it's not gonna cause a problem on the surrounding roads.
I think the fire department would probably wanna see that also, so you have, you know, you don't have people park. I mean, right now, there's no cars there. It's a wide open area. They, oh yeah, we can get in here, no problem, but that's why like venues have fire lanes and stuff like that.
They've been there dozens of times.
Oh, and I don't doubt that. But just like we were reviewing some, some applicant that didn't follow the plan. If you have a plan, we're on the same page, then if there is an issue, well, this is unprocedured or it just wasn't following the plan.
Okay. What else do I need to get to you as?
Well, we, we have the E A, so we can look through that as a group tonight, if, to see if there's any information that's missing. Yeah, so, so you don't think you need any other approvals from any other agencies for the event? Okay. Well, you checked no for town planning board, so that is, yeah, that, that's kind of what we're here for. We're gonna have to refer it to the county agencies, so that's, yes. That's just Schenectady County Planning, that's all. Is the road a state road or a county road?
Yeah.
Okay, so you probably wanna talk to county D P W. Just make sure they're okay with it. And, uh, do you need any Department of Health permit? Usually you do for a public venue. It might be fancy county Department of Health. Or it could be near state Department of Health. Yeah, see if they need a permit for it, for, you know, just because, like, they look at things like public waters, water and stuff like that. That's primarily their focus. They're, they wanna make sure that people show up their safe water to drink. And sanitary. It may, it may be enough, but check with them, yeah. Well, but we don't supersede the county. That's, that's all. So the twelve acreage, including the neighbor's property is six point seven? Okay. You didn't?
No.
Okay, so you'd have to show that to. You have to be patient with us. This is the first time we've done this.
You guys are doing terrific. So you just want me to measure the square footage of the neighbor's driveway, calculate acreage and put that in there?
Yeah, this is gonna be the total area that you're gonna use for the event, yeah.
Proceed. Yes, total. And whatever area you're gonna use for parking or access on the user's property.
Yeah.
List that. Your P E, your paved area for what will be probably accessible parking, is that very next to the building?
I guess.
For gravel, you know.
It's paved and it's gravel going down through the building, pressure run back down hard.
Did your, your, the traffic, people might be able to tell you, is that, is that grade, you know, an accessible slope? That's not gonna be the actual parking spot, um, and stuff like that, so we should be able to, to check all that out for you. The number of spots or the total number of parking.
Grade the barn.
Yeah, so I mean, the, if your parking is up on a hill and even if you have a path, you have, the grade has to be accessible or you have this, you know, specs for that. But if it's close enough.
The parking rate to the barn rate, almost what?
Yeah, but that's going in your favor.
Yeah. A little still turn it one or around.
Yeah.
D and B on page five refers to you. We both see that.
I, I answered that too.
Will the proposed action use cream new demand for water? And it does, how you're satisfying the demand and this thing with the liquid waste. Now, is this property on the town wastewater within the town sewer district in Mariville?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a reason why, uh, you wouldn't wanna hook up, have bathrooms there?
Yes, not needing a barn for bathroom facilities.
Well, I have to think about that one, because usually you're required to hook up if you're within the sewer district.
Well, it is hooked up, not the barn, but.
But the house.
The house, apartment. House.
They got forty party out there. The fire department, city association, that they're gathered in the district court parties.
Right. Well, this is gonna be a little more frequent, I guess. Your, your idea to have one event in once a week, something like that?
Oh, I retire as to my first year, probably a couple. I'd like to attend for the season.
Okay. All right, well, maybe what we have to do is just put something in, like, if the use becomes more frequent, you have to consider hooking up to the, you know, having facilities you can hook up to.
So, yeah, with, with that understanding, we would put a condition on the special use permit on usage then, right? Because the special use permit would follow with the land, correct? So even though you. So, even though you may not wanna do one every day, if someone bought that property from you, they could potentially do it every day unless we restrict the usage.
There are a lot of laws now.
To restrict the usage or the number of events. Yeah.
You can, it could be wide open or you guys put a limit on the number of plans.
Yeah, it was drafted that way, yeah.
Very similar, make me happier if we hook up to the store, you wanna do that?
Well, it would be, it would. Yeah, it would be better, I think.
Worked out as part of the experience.
And let's think about it.
So you have a zoning map house? You have a copy of the zoning, the property? When the front house is like this. Yeah, the front house is like this, building my back house is hard to, right? Presidential, yeah. So the back house, it's got a, a past bathroom facility on it. On the back of the house that we use for gatherings right now, fully handicap accessible, you know what I mean? Just that we'll be using that as well.
Yeah, that would be much better.
Yeah.
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 Okay, so it's a once, one unit now. I'll go without four heights and down the road, I'll work with Dale, add another heater in there.
Yeah, it would be better if it was definitely recorded on. Okay, and then the. It's still, yeah, I think, but. You're not disturbing more than money, so you're not creating any storm water runoff. Um, you don't have any air emission. No, you're gonna cater everything, right?
I'm used to the property. The way these things work is, you have a property, usually you bring in your court bodies, bring your caterers, bring stuff like that. Everybody comes in, has to maybe additionally insured. Um, I have to run to your special use, I've gotta have a representative on site to make sure things run kosher, quiet hours and all that stuff. I'm not providing anything. So, they ran out of chairs, tables, whatever.
Does the barn have electricity?
Yes.
Okay.
Kind of inspections for them, we can't let them go. Make sure it's making something, they didn't. I think the only thing the barn's best, not, is the exit lights on the inside, the doors.
Well, the only, the only other issue here with being noise. So I don't know, do you have any background levels, physical levels for, you know, sort of noise in the area so we can estimate?
Oh, yeah. When there's bike races going on, it's way over the DPD, but, the, uh. Noise is gonna be an issue, we're actively allowed, I talked to those Jason owners, they've been out, I've been out there with DJ beers, we've had parties before. You know, your orders is, they know what plans are happy. You're gonna have one neighbor who doesn't have a residential building on his property adjacent to the land, he's gonna complain no matter what.
Hey, well, just think, if you took some background reading out of the, you know, out of the property, we. Uh, just so we know, like, what the readings are like during the day and at night, and then we would, then you could make a determination about how much louder it could be, that would be one way to do it, I mean, that's what we did with the other events, right Dale?
There's a limit on your kids.
Yeah, seventy two or seventy five.
Seventy five, it's in there, you got hard limits, I like it.
Right, but if we have some background readings, then we would know, you know, how soon it's gonna, people are gonna experience noise or results of that, who's close and all that. Some, the, the traffic guys that you hired can probably do that, oh yes. So.
I'll give you that map back, the way this facility is set up, you have a house in the front of the lake. And this is, we call it back house, and behind that is where the barn is, and it's sheltered on three sides by building mirrors. That was a wreck, it was designed so they got air, music in this one area. And a buffer on three sides and jet it across the lot to the other side. Behind that barn, there are neighbors, that breakfast is right there, and I got another neighbor who, um, a lot of the rapids.
Um, okay, if, maybe if you could denote on the plan where you're gonna put the music, that would help too. You know, where you would, where you put, put the string quartet or whatever you're having.
Where, in the barn, I don't know, I have no idea where it's at.
Well, you, you make the rules, Dale, since you're the owner, so if you tell them they have to have the music inside, that solves most of your problems. You know?
Okay.
I think that the rest of the. You don't, you don't have any surface, you don't have any wetlands or the weight, none of that is on your property.
Anyone?
Well, it says surface water features, any portion of the project say contain wetlands or other water bodies, including streams, rivers, ponds or lakes.
Okay, so, the lake is in Lake District, I go through the Lake District, therefore, I'm concerned the Lake District is not part of the residential area. Now, if you go all the way back, the far end of my lot, which is two thousand feet away, check my creek's way down there, we're not gonna be even close to that. And that'll, that'll over three acres. I just drove down, Jason property, they put two hundred foot casing down, and then they went another three hundred foot through bedrock and it came up dry.
I think that in Bronde, three hundred feet.
That must be the old place, right?
Yeah.
It's the surface.
No, Marival's hitting this one, my wells four hundred feet on the property.
Yeah, and then right, um, mine, a hundred and forty, and I hit water and what, you know, my parents have lizard. Oh, yeah, it's really weird.
It's not that deep, I'm gonna have my well company, because it should, and charge you how much casing.
I don't know what section or what item are you on, with, um, E. Uh, section B one. It's top of the page ten, there is license taken here, but. The weeklys. I bet it's gonna make, that's a difference.
Are there any threatening dangerous species near this site?
Okay, any goes fine, whatever you want.
Well, no, if, if you go on the website and you fill out the EAF, and you put your parcel in there, it'll tell you.
Okay.
It does multiple stuff for you.
Yeah, it doesn't show me.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, well, this, this one's funny, because he did it by hand, so, yeah, yeah, so it wouldn't show that or the archeology, but we already have the sign off from Sipbo, so. It does. I don't know if it, you kick it, eagles? You know? Oh, it said no, okay.
Yeah, they, they still wouldn't come up to the hit, they're transient, or now they're.
Okay, well, you can't miss those, that stuff. Anything else you, you would like to bring next time?
I think the site plan's gonna be helpful.
I have to go and get the site plan, um, based on what I wanna get a few minutes.
Yeah, and your, your traffic people are gonna wanna do that too, so it'll all be conjunction, they can put all the notifications on it.
I just wanted to get a warm buzz for you guys, for sure, and my studies and all the other stuff.
We're not allowed to give warm buzzes.
If you don't wanna reduce.
Yeah, whatever's easiest, yeah, absolutely.
So have you thought anyway about this traffic assessment? Yeah.
So, I'm sure they're working out the area, some companies with that would assess that.
Got the timing on that, so.
What's that?
Kind of the timing, so we can kind of expect one more.
All right, I'll make calls tomorrow on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
Right, you wanna do motion to table?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I come back next month, and I'll evolve this, then after that, is it okay to have a representative of my daughter here instead of me? I have to go places to make money, pay for this.
You, you can always have somebody act as your agent, that's enough.
Okay, she's gonna be thrilled. She's got much better people skills than me. I'll stop by, tomorrow day, I'll grab that map. I'll get the letter from my neighbor.
Do I make that? Um, okay. As a motion, the table, the, uh, the per. Action, um, it's fifteen better.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next year.
Next year, I'll see, hey, you have a script, somebody else.
Okay, next, next on new business. Oh, they're working.
Yes.
Yeah.
On what?
Yes.
Pass?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you, that's a new business, Richard Percher, in six ninety six page road, doing a minor subdivision. Percher, here?
I'm here, he's like, predicted in years, nine, or the, uh, here, living. Uh, we provided to the, uh, to the town, the, uh, plans with the driveway shown on it, and the house, as they requested. Uh, DUCI meets the, uh, we're just here tonight to request a public hearing for next month, and we'll just try to afford. Yeah, two lot subdivision on Gate Road, uh, North Lot One, it's, uh, gonna be, uh, ten point seven acres, and Lot Two would be five point six acres. Uh, Lot One, Richard Ross, who built his home on, and Lot Two with, uh, his daughter to build her own home. Uh, there is a variance required for Lot One because it was forty plus frontage. Uh, expect to get that variance next week as the meeting was shipped, it's, uh, next year's event, so this past two days.
We, we are doing the night there.
You were waiting on that, I believe, for this.
I was, was this, is that a hundred feet of frontage?
Sixty, sixty and forty?
Correct.
Would we prefer it to be fifty fifty in case of future? Was that? That, I think would require two variances, and I.
Right, I didn't.
Okay.
I mean.
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I mean, let's, um, so explain the variance that you're seeking.
I was just thinking, we only have forty feet on Lot One, you need sixty, so we're asking you, uh, have only forty feet of frontage to Lot One. Uh, Lot Two will have the driveway on it, it'll be a means for the user, ingress, egress, easement. As shown, uh, yeah, yeah, has spoke to an attorney with a, an agreement, a draft agreement, and we'll put that in place. We have a Google, or it's filed. Yeah, it's, it's the same draft you made, you sent us, um, we had Mary Best loving.
Well, Mary Best, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Dale, the turnaround is acceptable as the drive, the house or driveway Lot One?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
It's the place to turn around.
Okay, I didn't know. Yeah.
And he doesn't own any land around the, right, because these are really two lots, yeah.
He owns lots of the, the north as well.
Well, this may be a question they should have asked before, but if you avoid getting area then by doing something with that a lot?
Yeah, we will just, uh, there's no clearing required over here for this driveway.
That's a lot, it gives me a contrast, it appears to me, it's a, yeah, it's a little slope there compared to.
That's very, a little gentler down here.
I, I believe, we're just waiting on zoning, and the, uh.
You guys have an accept for public hearing now? If you're hosting public hearing in Denver, if you're comfortable, you can, like, you mean.
I'm gonna know it's the area.
Yes.
And we could see it, uh, slightly.
Okay, yeah, just make sure you give us everything Sunday before the meeting.
Just want the language for these, and that.
Yeah, and I think Dale will wanna see the deed, though, too, and the, and the subdivision plot with all the notes. Did they put all the right notes on it, Dale?
Yeah, yeah, well, this isn't what time we submitted.
Okay.
If, if he lenders, it's, it's what he sent us, and Mary Beth, and I, and we, we made no changes. So that, that's what will be filed on the, uh, like, yeah.
Right, when I sent you, it was just a form, though, so however, fill it out for you, for your project, and that way we'll have it on file here. Okay?
Yeah, I just, um, things we got inside are, will need to be filled out, because we're not on both, um, so how do we, what do you have to do?
Well, you would wanna file it at the same time you filed the two separate deeds.
Right, after approval.
Yeah, after the approval, and so you just need to make sure Dale has it, it doesn't have to be signed, but he has it, so he can check it off. And make sure when you sign the flat, which then will enable you to file the deeds, that you also have the shared access agreement that goes in the record at the time. Like, we don't wanna find out later that you sold it to somebody and then they, they, the shared access agreement didn't get filed. We're trying to protect you too, you know? Okay?
Can we schedule the public hearing tonight for last month?
We can, yes, and do we get, have any planning recommendation on this, or do we not need to do a referral? So if somebody wants to make a motion, that's the public hearing.
I have a quick question. A little one.
There's a house on. Oh, there is? Yeah, there is a house on. Okay. And you might feel.
It's very narrow.
Yes. Okay.
I do know this.
Yeah, so we'll see verification, I won't be proposed down there. As they suggest that be a different address, we'll put a different address on.
Maybe come on to the board?
Actually, I have a preliminary seeker neg deck that we typically, that I can, that I can offer, that Dale drafted, thank you, before we set the public hearing, so I can, I can read that. Thank you. So I will make a motion for preliminary seeker determination for the Kirker Minor Subdivision. The Town of Duansburg Planning Board has completed an environmental assessment of the Kirker proposed minor subdivision consisting of two lots. Lot One consists of approximately ten point seven acres with approximately forty-three feet of road frontage. A variance is required by the Town of Duansburg zoning board. And Lot Two consists of approximately five point six acres with sixty feet of frontage. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the Town Comprehensive Plan and compliant with the zoning ordinance for the R2 Agricultural Residential Zoning District. There is anticipated construction of a single-family dwelling on each lot. The proposed action will have little or no effect on the existing character of the community with no aesthetic impacts anticipated. The proposed action will not have an impact on a critical environmental area. Proposed action will have little or no impact or any adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for transit, biking, or walking. The proposed action will have little or no impact on energy usage. Any construction will require a well to be drilled and a permit from the Schenectady County Health Department for a septic system. The parcels are not listed on the National Register or State Register of Historic Places and have no known archaeological sites. The subdivision is not within a hundred-year floodplain or remediation site. Reposed action should not increase any potential erosion or flooding, and future construction will have limited disturbance and will include appropriate stormwater controls be installed prior to construction. The New York State DEC has records of rare, threatened, or endangered species, primarily the northern long-eared bats. Any tree removal activities must occur between October thirty-first and March thirty-first. If these days can, dates cannot be accommodated, an onsite assessment by DEC staff will be required. The proposed action should not create a hazard to environmental resources or human health. Therefore, based on this information, the Planning Board is determined that the proposed minor subdivision will have, not have any significant adverse impact on the environment, and a negative declaration is proposed for the purposes of Article Eight of the Environmental Conservation Law. So I will make that preliminary seeker determination for the Kirker Minor Subdivision. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
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 Yes.
Yeah.
When Jeff signs, it's usually eighteen point.
I made a motion to set the, uh, public hearing for the Kirkor Minor Subdivision, uh, for January twenty and, uh, twenty-two. Yes.
Yes.
I'm here, sorry, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll see you on January twentieth.
Yes.
And, uh, okay. Hey, moving on, Len Armstrong. Two six, six, three, one, three, Chinchas Road. Okay. Where are we?
Last meeting. They asked, uh, Chris had asked you to provide some information on the deed of this property. I did that, and that reflects, what you have today, it reflects the standard notes. All this is on it. I might add one thing, and that is, I talked to Mr. Armstrong today. He's the recipient of the Lot Number Two. I guess he reaches that property for the fun of it on the road, because that's going to continue on as long as he's alive. There's no place to develop for that lot at all. Andy told me that Mary is there. He got married there. And that, that's one reason the property is divided that way, that position on in the back. There's a tree really right in front of you, that's, uh, that was quite serious.
Yeah.
The board, is the board in favor of returning this for administrative process, Dale?
And now we got the rest more.
I didn't know, they'll wait for you. Okay?
Okay, I'll make a motion, I need to propose Armstrong private subdivision, uh, meter pre- or increase in a significant planning issue with respect to the existing or potential future use of any involved parcels. The Planning Board decides to impose action, we further exempt from any further subdivision review pursuant to Article Three, Two, Four, and refers to actions of the quote-unquote, Officer, Administration. Now, second demo.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, good to go.
It's very much building, getting those property lines straightened out there.
What do you require, is that I read down and get signed? Thank you very much, enough great business.
Item under business is, uh,
Well, please. There were two bits of information that we, and one was the question to Mr. Ogle, to give you the plan you made. Land to, um, and the question he posed was, does he want to keep his property separate from the one that we are combining? And he said he would, I think he would separate. So that's question number one. The second issue was that, um, we're going to have written a letter to the New York State Historic Preservation Office about, or shipping, right, is you call it shipping? So they reviewed the documentation, and based on their opinion was that the first project will have no effect to historically. No, are there any other questions at this point?
All right.
Is this real? Well, it holds, too.
Above the.
Well, I'm looking at, um, this one pops up as historically significant, which is why we did, why it was a type one, right?
Correct.
So, I think for this one, we kind of, you know, have to go through the process.
Really, because the historic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So rewards, which is there in three?
Just on the head of the register, so it's a basement.
Yeah, it's, it's other houses, it's a house. Sure, we're, 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 we're.
So do we put a letter to him?
Uh, we, yeah.
Yeah, we have a letter, yeah.
I just know if we were to, we're the Avery.
There it is in the list.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, we're. Yeah, I just didn't know, I just didn't know which, what. Yeah, I just didn't know what that, that historic property was, or what that was actually, actually located.
Yeah, but it's still type one. Doesn't, it doesn't change the classification of the app. So I think if you come next time, well, the board will be in a position to do a neg deck and set the public hearing. So that would be, the next meeting is in January, and we have to that in September.
So that's going to be a public hearing.
Yeah.
So what do I do?
You don't have to do anything more, you don't have to do anything more, now it's up to us, we need to do the negative declaration, so we call for the public hearing. No, you don't have to, I don't think, does anybody see a reason why she should have to come out in January? No, we'll, we'll handle the paperwork and, uh, and then we'll let you know to come in February for the public hearing. All right.
January, make a motion to put the schedule of the whole thing.
So, let's remind us to be, that made that. That'll be February twentieth, yeah. Well.
Yeah, it's the seventeen.
If you have any questions or you don't remember, just call her. Yeah, we do, to do the neg deck, you'll have to be on the agenda. Yeah.
I have a motion to table the survey, uh, that's given, um, private subdivision till the January, what do you?
Sorry about that, you should have had one for tonight, so.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll see you in February, uh, the next meeting, uh, we'll do our process and, and, and go on. Okay, moving on to old business, uh, Jules Auburn, special use permit for the motor vehicle sale, six. Mr. Guirem, sir.
I think there was. Resolution. You had said you'd get a copy of. I figured that that had not happened yet. Hearing, had hearing last month.
Is there anything more that you have given us?
There wasn't anything coming from me that I recall. No, yeah, I made those changes, and I, I sent that in, right, an amendment just to the, I don't remember, a couple of, there was a typo on the, I, uh.
And the number of vehicles, and I think the amount of disturbance you changed as well.
Yeah, that was it, thank you. Yeah, yeah. All right, we needed that, we did that before, just a week ago.
Showed the areas that were going to be, and, um, yeah, I.
One or two vehicles for sale, uh, three spaces for vehicles to comply with the state requirement.
There'll be no, uh.
Work repair, no automotive repair, yeah, that's right. On the site.
Yeah, I mean, I, I did drive by the site this week.
Yeah, I mean, I, I did drive by the site this week. From what I can see, uh, there already appears to be one of the two vehicles on the site. There also is a skid steer on the site that looks like it's being used to. Uh, let's, we'll call it. Move, uh, in, inoperable vehicles. So I, I do have a concern that the site is already not in compliance. And that, if we, we issue a special use permit, we're creating a situation. Where we're putting the building inspection and Dale in, in a spot to maintain another property that is continually not in compliance. So.
It also gives us. I think we're, they gotta give some. What, what is the? Yeah, you know, or something, you know.
Yeah, but I mean, we want to create another situation where we're just chasing somebody around that isn't in compliance now. What, what's going to make them come into compliance when we put these conditions on the plan? Uh, one thought I, I had, and I don't know, Teresa, I'm looking for your opinion here. Is there some way we can condition the special use? If there's violated, if there's a certain amount of violations or something like that, that the special use is automatically revoked? Or something like that, or?
I don't think we can automatically revoke it without giving a public, you know, without doing a hearing.
Okay.
But certainly we can put stringent, you know, requirements in it relative to the appearance of the property and everything else. From a speaker standpoint, I guess Dale would be really helpful to the board, maybe if we did an inspection of the property. And, yeah, give us a list of what needs to be addressed and what may stat condition be approved of.
Is it, is we can start out knowing that everything has been remedied up to that point? Like you said, if you, I mean, if you've noticed, if you've already seen it, multiple vehicles and. They're already under normal account ordinance, you only allowed out so many unregistered or unoperable vehicles.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the whole purpose of my coming here is to try to get him into compliance, you know? I don't think I hid the fact that, you know, he'd been doing this and I had said to him, we got an apartment. Knowing that that would bring him within the regulatory framework. As opposed to his neighbor who's completely out of control, for example. So I understood that it was not, you know, and I had said to him, you gotta clean this up. And, and he had said to me that he did and that it was much better and that the, the vehicles were gone. Cause there, when I was there, there were a whole bunch of them. Very early on in the process. He said, you can't go to the board and ask for this relief and have all this here. So, I mean, I will tell him again, you know, listen, the board's going to send Dale out to inspect it. And you better be in compliance. So that he can start out at least at a point when Josh was saying, okay, you know, he's in compliance.
I just don't want to create another situation where. We've got constant violations and constant, you know, work for Dale and, and the department when we know it's an issue, you know?
When inspection, we're compliant and we approve it, it shows that work, it works, we work for them. And he maintains it. And then he should understand that especially his permit can be revoked if he doesn't stay in compliance. Like, it sounds like we need to make sure he's kind of a baseline of clean before we prove something, let him get dirty before he's clean.
I think it's a good idea to have Dale inspect and just know any issues so that we can make. Especially his permanent contingent on those things being addressed.
I don't think that's a reason.
We can give them kind of a heads up through you that, you know, this is the next two weeks, you have some time.
And, and to address what Matt's saying, I understand the problem. You don't want to keep dumping problems on Dale.
Right.
The problem with that is that those problems are out there today now. Know what I mean? I keep using the guy next door because he's next door, you know, there, as we all know, not the only problem in Dwayne's. But better to have somebody that's within the framework. I think, in my opinion, than to have people just do whatever the hell they want all the time and. And, and it's too much for any one person to do. And that's part of the problem. You know, so it's, it's kind of like a damn if you do that, if you don't, a little bit happen. But I think it's the better solution. Because you do have some, as Teresa's saying, you have the right to say to them, listen, you know, just what Mike was saying, hey, if you don't buy it. You know, you're at risk of losing your business. You know, notwithstanding, come on, if you violate this permit, you're subject to, you know. Yeah, that's always true. Yeah, that's kind of gratuitous language. Yeah, yeah. And as, if I was your attorney, I'd be concerned about putting that language into special use permit. When you don't put it in everyone, you know?
This, this, we, we have made approvals in the past, continuing people addressing specific issues.
Yeah, yeah.
There was the guy, the guy with all the RVs on Route twenty, you remember? So he wanted a subdivision, so he said, you know, clean it up.
Yeah. You know, there's a whole bunch of conditions there. And now you're in this problem of, you know, not doing it. And it's a big headache and it takes up your time and it takes up his time, you know? But I think the alternative is you have people, like I say, really screwing their neighbors, you know?
Well, there, there is definitely, Dom hasn't quit, right? You can send Dom out.
Not yet. Yeah, part of our, our role here is not to have a situation where everything falls right back to Dale. I mean, you can't deliver him a problem because he's got shoulders and only, like. This thing, you know, I mean, you can't carry everyone down.
Well, 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 with that, Jerry, we'll be ready to move forward next time, okay?
You can table this as well pending inspection by Dale. But I'll make a motion to table the board, especially use permit, uh, from one of the. Until the January twentieth meeting, pending a cycle visit from Dale and thorough and detailed work. We have a company.
Sure.
John's going to go to the guy next door.
I'll second it. Yeah, you get the word.
I'll, I'll second that.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thanks to. Next, Jerry, the opinion, sorry.
Yes.
Reality. Next on old business is, uh. Even very noble, which is Murray O'Keeffe Solar. Don, you here?
I thought you were going to purchase a baby.
I want to speak to you, Jack.
Lauren, here's an update. We are, we know you've got some, some results that were different than we expected on the, the perpulation. That's the effect that you're well designed and just farm water retention. Up to speed.
You got the perpulation test results. Need to install change the script specifically, the infiltration trench, uh, trenches. Our engineers are working on that now. We're going to send a revised document to Prime A as soon as we can, so we revise the script. And do a small change to the site plan, changing out infiltration trenches, which will likely be swales, but need to finish running the clogs. And get going. Yeah, we told Prime A and Dale, right, as we just, the technical staff, so help the documents soon.
Have an idea what the new convention is, would be like?
So I wanted, this is preliminary, but things will likely be swales, vegetative buffers around it. They also need to run some calculations, make sure the swales work, but. That's what we thought. Mentioned to Prime A, it said, we also need to help, that's accepted, um, accepted as management practice.
Very swell, right? Or wet swells.
Uh, I think that there, so we're not that far in design at this point, but I, no, I don't want to. We're, we do know, nobody's got to Prime A as soon as we can, so let's turn the documents soon as realistically. That's, unfortunately, I have its point.
Thank you.
You're using the grass vegetation as your pretreatment, or are you using a gravel biopharm?
At this point, we just don't have an asset.
All right.
Designed, but we will apply everything once.
What's your timeframe? I think you'd have that to us before the next meeting, or is it? Okay.
Yeah, I can't say exactly when, but I'm very.
We got them prime, look at the, you know, at the same time so that we have enough time if we wanted to go with an action at the next meeting. We got to get our consultant involved and. Time is everything. Okay. Make a motion to table.
So what, do you, we have a time, what's with the deadline for getting information to? Or what's Prime A to give back to us? What will we?
We need, we need primes reviewing ten days.
Right, every time.
You got to get the prime. He said.
And I think the other thing was the, the. All around this. SRG.
Yeah.
They were going to give the town a proposal to do the training and the follow-up on the, on the batteries. Haven't we seen that yet? Yeah.
We just have to.
Yeah, yeah. I've talked to Paul, you know, occasions and that side of the need for that type of thing. Bill, are you talking to Paul about some sort of annual training modules that'll be provided for our local first responders? That's an important part of this, our, our, you know, deliberation.
Right.
Yeah.
You keep very interested. Our understanding is that you want the contract to go through the town and post it through AM. So we said, we told him to expect a call from the town, but that, that would, that was the extent of what we told him.
Yep, and, and Dale has called it. Jeff, why don't you reach out to? We're just, we're just looking for the proposal. It'll just be an add-on to the existing contract. But I didn't want anybody to, I mean, it's like any other expert the town hires. The town hires the expert, has contracted the expert and the applicant puts money in escrow in order to fund that work. So, you know, it's a typical approach. So we just need the proposal to do it. I think those are the only two things.
Those would be incorporated in our ultimate approval, that we would have conditions that, you know, you provide this, blah, blah, blah.
I will reject you for that, you just let him know that the town's trying to contact him, has, we alerted him that this would be happening.
Okay.
Everybody's busy.
Holidays. Okay, so, uh, make a motion to table this. Amendment application, so our, our.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Time is earned, so if you get that stuff, you know, in time for the next meeting, then. By the, the action. Thanks for sticking around for so long. The next item on the agenda is sketch plan review, which we have nothing. Following item is other, and what I propose now is that we deal with this, uh, contest situation. It's, it's my recommendation that we, uh, first are, are turning to, right to. Douglas outlining that the, uh, planning board's concerns with the actions taken to date, which are inconsistent. With the approved plans that you had, and also to identify that the screening. Does not fulfill the requirements of thirteen point two point four and that we will require. Mr. Rent's property to be obscured from the view of those trucks. At the last meeting, Teresa had proposed a, you know, a board, solid board fence so that it was obscured. I think the letter should clearly state that because the, the design is, and it's kind of agreed to by the board is, is really. Not, not whatsoever.
I'm okay with the letter. I'm not sure if we could put a new demand, new fence in a letter. Because it wasn't part, with screening, I understand reinforcing that part, invisible screen.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, okay. I'm not sure, can we say, acknowledge the idea of our fence?
I think, I think what we want to do is, if you, if you all would be comfortable in it. Making a motion to direct that they be at the January twentieth meeting. To, um, with a revised site plan. And, and, and application to amend their special use permit. Otherwise, the, they're in danger of having their special, being put in notice that they were bumping the special use permit. So.
We, we said, we could take the methods how they comply with thirteen point two point four, but.
I don't know how we would say, put up the board fence now and they might be reconfiguring that whole area. I mean, that, that was kind of the point that I thought we had made was that. The plan can't be built, so therefore they need an amendment. So. Basically, they can't use it and they have to come back. So the special use permit. Is really invalid because it's based on a plan that can't be built by the engineer in his own words.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and they can definitely do, um. And they can put up something more than cones. I mean, they can, you know, before the ground freezes, they can put up a, you know, some four by four posts with a chain or something. I mean, it doesn't have to be the, or, you know, final fencing, but.
Homes that are used up, they're used up.
Well, I mean, I'm using it as a storage unit plus the, uh.
Yeah, I think, I think just a line for the planning board. Stating that we want you to appear at the next meeting. If you don't fail, you're to appear to. It didn't work.
We're risking the other, because they got to come back and present their revised plan based on their letter. But some of the people are, you know.
Yeah.
We made a recommendation within the letter that we're, we're looking at having the board fence included in, in whatever the new plan is going to be.
Yeah, I would say the, the, the means and methods of how they meet that obscuring thing could be one of a, a number of things. Board fence, you know, a firm, you know, with a wall or anything, you know, so, 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 yeah, some sort of identifying that you need. To have something to obscure that you.
I don't know if you said that. Why don't you guys make a motion to add your ideas to that?
I'll make the.
Problems with this? Okay.
Just a matter of any. I, 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 I'm just, let me, I'm just. All this stuff gets laid on Dale and, you know, I mean, there's seven of us and one of him, and he's got to carry the, a big ball for us and it's, it's a tough nut sometimes. And, uh. I, I, yeah, I think we have a lot of sympathy for the position that he gets put in, not by us, but by the applicant. And then, you know, he starts to negotiate something in between, but, you know, things, you know, we do have an obligation to, to the neighbors. And I think they have a valid point.
Somebody's authority. That was. Then decided to make a change.
Yeah, because they've got no authority, you know, on a permit.
Okay, well, that explains.
Yeah, I mean, and, and Phil would make recommendations, but those recommendations shouldn't dictate, you know, drivers.
We told him to put gravel in the ditch in the swales. That would help slow the water down.
But at that point, Brett should then go, go back and revise his plan. They should, they should respend.
They should respend, yeah.
Plan, uh, not just go basically, okay, we're, we're going to call an audible and.
Yeah, that's the thing. You, it's got to be some sort of process that, because we spend a lot of time on that. If we don't, we don't react to a little bit of this, it makes us look bad for any future permit.
Well, either way, I mean, you would have to call audibles all the time. But he, we have, he would have built this thing that he's got to sign up on the plan, but he could have signed up. He would have built this thing that he's gonna sign up on the plan, but he could have signed up on the virtual plan, and he's, he changed it.
He couldn't certify it, and that that started the campaign.
Yeah, yeah.
And just to be clear, I mean, um, PEC does have primary jurisdiction over the SWPS, we're not in MS four like.
Yes, this wasn't a SWPS thing.
I know, I know.
But so then, you know, to get to some of the neighbor's concerns, they're not gonna remedy anything until they have a new plan. Or or, you know, I mean, so there's still gonna be, essentially, there's gonna be no screening change until the new plan is approved.
Yeah.
And then same with the the water.
And the water should be in issue for six months.
Yeah, I mean, and and I hate to say this, but.
I could tell to BOP to, or yesterday, today. Have photos of when we have this all this stormwater. And, um, see if they could dig out those ditches. In the front, which might help a lot.
Ditch maintenance, or is it just the volume?
Color.
Ditch maintenance.
Okay, so if there is, the colors are properly sized in theory, but it's just.
Well, the other problem is we had a tremendous amount of precipitation. You know.
I'll tell you.
Yeah, but I mean, filling in those ditches with, or those. Swale with stone, I mean, it create, I I personally do not think that's a good option. They'll freeze over in the winter. It 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 doesn't present the obstacle for snow plowing, so you could pile snow over top of them. I mean, to me, it it creates another set of problems by filling those in with stone. That is opposite of what we're trying to, trying to do.
And the water was not supposed to run down onto the neighbor's property, it was supposed to go out the road, down this way, and into the. DOT, and if they're changing that, then they gotta come back, you know? And there's no guarantee that you guys will approve it, because. It sounds like whatever they're doing is resulting on water running at a greater rate of speed onto the neighbor's property, so.
Unfortunately, involved in putting in an entirely different system like that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to say, which which more expensive, but that's.
Like they're saying, the the cut, so, you know, the cut is like ten feet now, instead of, that's why it went in the corner, because the the engineer didn't buy into it. A proper toe ball, you never give us a, an elevation profile of the trench.
Yes. They have, they have, they would put storing that water on site and.
Yeah, you know, maybe get a couple of that with the pond that overflows, I mean, that. Yes, Steve's right.
Yeah, and and they did all, there was bank work, right, up slope from the, they dug that hillside way down. All this.
So, all right, so we're gonna get a motion for that, to this letter. That's the details, so.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Welcome.
Yes.
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 Lynn?
Yes.
Okay. I have nothing else. Anybody have any other issues? End of approval from the November eighteenth meeting. We have any can do amendments?
Nothing.
I think it's more of a. We could change either format or minimum or format in the agenda. I see that Jules has action items, so like, oh, what are we, we're supposed to do the four things last time, they're kind of looking back on this, we're looking back, there's no, is there a way to like? We table this because we need this to suggest. Can I change it?
That's the way it should be, that's the way it should be, and for. For several of them, it has been listed out like that, so, and all of a sudden, you could just do that. In terms of what's gonna happen next and what we're waiting for from the people. You know, because.
That's a very, that's a good idea.
It gives us a summary plus minutes, you know, with.
Yeah, when you do the minutes, maybe you can change them to.
Extract the.
And I will take on that some of this, to do the, kind of reading a paragraph, well, there is one item, there is two.
Yeah.
If you somewhere at the end, that's your very closest matter, maybe.
And I have to admit, I did not remember I was supposed to do a resolution pro due. I thought we were still waiting for something. I don't know why, but I did.
Okay, you're one mistake this year, thank you.
Well, no.
You gotta hope that I, you gotta.
It's a call.
Yeah, all right. I'll take that.
Does anybody have to say the other?
Melissa, you do a great job with the minutes. Would it be helpful if you sent them, um, to us? For review in advance? You've sent them to me, but it's it's a lot on you to put these minutes together, especially with these meetings being so long, so. Maybe we could offer to review them in advance, although that said, we haven't had. That many comments, because you do a good job, and I'm just trying to think how we can help you. No? Okay.
Is there any motion to approve the November eighteenth, um, meeting this? Second? Yes.
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 Welcome.
Yes.
Yes.
And.
The world call, what do you think? Next motion.
Uh, we wish to, uh, join the meeting, alright. Second, before nine o'clock?
Wow. Welcome.
Yes.
Josh?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Lynn? Lynn?
Yes.
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 Hey.
Mary.